Like to call the Tuesday, July twenty-third special council meeting of the Duval City Council's quarter at seven oh two P M. Would you all please rise? I'd like to leave this to you now. At the end of the state's answer, we're going for which stands.
What we need to do. And you got. You need to follow the physics in chess.
Certainly, please.
Certainly, Mayor Opanandu, Mayor Lieutenant Henry. Mister Schaefer here, Mister Mercer, your Mister Supple, your Miss Taplin. Miss Kugel.
Here.
Thank you.
And we have a quorum. Is our motion approved this evening's council agenda?
So.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we will go ahead and move on to the interview finals to council. And then we'll turn it out or to mail it to me.
What's up? Um, just a quick note about. Pause. I have not heard from council member now, so there's, I guess, some squeezes at this time. So with that. Interview and finalist, council position one. Okay, yeah. Um, so for this council, I just sent you an email. Please wanted to see the questions I will be asking. Thank you for those who said questions and I tried to combine and touch them in front of us as I think with them. So for this, we usually have one finalist at a time and the rest leaves the room. I'm not sure how we want to handle that if we get off the rose room, but that's what happened. So first up, we'll have Steven Shomer, Tim Shomer, correct? Shomer, okay, thank you. And then John Isaacson and Jen, I mean, you can follow her on the road. And then we'll come into it. And then Steven, you can, would you like to stand or sit? I think you mentioned standing in the podium. I see bottled water out there, but if you prefer to sit, I would be fine. I'll be okay with it if you have. Yeah, that's great. And if you need water, I see somewhere. And then do I need to be prepared to come back up or are we okay to start? I wasn't sure. I think he's, I hope he's got ready to dig through it from that. Oh, you're, you're. Well, Steven, thank you for joining us. Um, I have four questions to ask you. The first, when making decisions, how do you determine what is in the best interest of the community?
As we talked about before, mediation is number one component of my, uh, thank you. Of my management skills is you cannot make a decision without a condition. And it says the decision will be based on, or will impact all citizens of the city. I would endeavor to give as much input as possible from the citizens to make a decision that would impact things that are being. So that's. And here's the form, that's the most important component of that is gathering information submitted and informed.
What do you believe are the most urgent issues the city is facing currently? And how would you like to see the council address?
What I've noticed, you know, being in the city for over thirty-one years is I watched the city grow from a small town to the grown city. Private city that we have right now. The most pressing issue, I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
What do you believe are the most urgent issues the city is facing currently? And how you would like to see the council address?
The urgent issue I kind of discovered as being a resident is the city of the council as they operate as legislative department city make important decisions. And those decisions, I mean, have produced a very good outcome and look at the city over the long period of time. But what I discovered as a resident and a citizen of the city is it's not always informed to the public. The process and the information that the council uses to generate that decision. And what would help garner support for the council and for the city decision is more communication. I know I'm gonna tend to harp on that a lot this evening is because an informed citizen can be your best response to court by having. So a lot of technology savvy people in the city, you know, there's of course all mixes of opponents from people my age, the young. Tech savvy guys, people. And so it would be useful for the council to take advantage of all the tools that are available, you know, which I see having higher communication guard commensy helped. Uh, the newsletter and the water bill has been very important and helpful. Uh, Facebook posts, other social media posts, getting the information out of what the city is doing. This the other day when I was talking to a council person, I discovered that the, uh, King or I think Washington ran fire down to the traffic lights at intersection that that we need an entry to improve the traffic flow. And I thought that was a fantastic idea, but unless I talked to the council person, I wouldn't have even known about that. So these are great things that the city is doing, that the council is doing that inform, informed citizenry. I think what number one love to hear and would come behind you even more trusting your decisions, trusting your actions and trusting your emotions. So again, I come back to the communication component is leverage that and use that as best as you can to get knowledge out to citizenry of what you're doing, what you're planning and giving. And keep them informed. I mean, I know there's been that for the council, which is a great idea. There was the, the Duval days, there was that, I think that sign board presentation, I think that you put on, Amy. I mean, these are great ways to get the word out or the good word that the city administration does. Because otherwise it's conjecture, assumption and it's word mouth, you know, from anybody who may think they know what they're talking about versus what true information the facts are.
Thank you. How will you incorporate diverse viewpoints and perspectives into your decision and policy?
Communicate again with residents, find out through surveys, find out, uh, chat to the council would be great. Maybe something interesting can be involved in is find out what the residents feel across the entire city. You are serving an entire city of ten plus thousand people of all races, creeds, genders, I mean, everything. We're serving them all. We can't just serve one group or focus on one group. The city has to take all opinions, all, uh, thoughts, desires into account when making decisions. And surveys are okay, but sometimes people don't respond to that. Um, I don't know what tools really are available to the council that they can use, but that would be something that I would like to um, discover and investigate to see how can we get in touch with the people, how can we get viewpoints? Uh, can we have forums? Can we have more public meetings? How do we engage and involve the citizenry? To help guide the council making decisions. Otherwise, we're making decisions in a whole or a vacuum and you don't have input from the majority of the people. Sure. I mean, everyone here I know serves, wants to serve the city, has the best, the best of the city's interests at heart. You make decisions that you think are all best for the city. But more from, from an engineering training, the more information is better. And so that to me is what I would strive to do. It's many viewpoints and many opinions that kind of were making decision. And another thing to consider is you can always postpone it. I mean, if it's something that you don't feel you have enough information, postpone it, get more information and come back. I mean, it's a, it's a press emergency, of course, we can do that. But don't rush things, take the time together.
Thank you. And finally, is there anything you'd like to say about yourself that you feel is important for us to consider before we conclude your interview?
Um, I think my resume, my application touches on most of what I think I have to offer to the city. Cause I'm a quick summary, I have a lot of technical training, a lot of technical experience, but I consider myself a generalist. I like to look at things, you know, all things from all perspectives and not get some things are focused down into one specific area. That was what I liked about my job. I went to missionary, T is IT touches. I worked with utility, I built systems for every department, so I got involved in finance with engineering, obviously with the shop that repaired the vehicles to the operators department to H R. So I was able to touch and see what every department does and what they offer and need to help give me a more well-rounded picture of what everyone needs and not, I'm not just building a system for one group or a, uh, environment for one group. One thing I didn't mention in my resume, which I thought about later is, um, emergency management is something I was involved with my previous job. Um, I'm I C S certified and N I B S certified, so it's expensive systems. For service, I am capable of doing. And another thing I did mention is I, I would like to get involved in regional committees, maybe with King County, the transportation committee, emergency management. And try to get more of the city's needs and desires out to the larger agencies or sort of the government in the area, so that we can get more involved in that decision-making process. Maybe even if we just sit at the table and listen as the city, we can bring, I don't know, anybody can bring information back to the council to help them make decisions. But that is something that I guess I would like to use my skill set for in some of those committees, the kind of patient committee. Other than there's a flooding, uh, yeah, valid flooding, you can kind of, uh, with me, emergency management, things like that. So those are something that kind of entered me because it's kind of in my wheelhouse. There was one. No, no, I guess I, I touched on it was on the, uh, King County committees. Is it, you have any question for me or is it that kind of agree upon the present? Fair enough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you go down there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and you can go and have a seat up here if you'd like and help yourself. Oh, yeah. All right. So I have four questions to ask you. Um, first off, when making decisions, how do you determine what is in the best interest?
Well, I would say my first, my first reaction, what my experience and then from there, I reflect on everyone in the base within the community and I like to try to miss saying, I like to try to second guess my visual, so I can probably honestly make a decision based on what I'm inspired. I was looking for the opposite position where I whether it be going there in another top of community, whatever, so change, we change about my, my own experiences.
What do you believe are the most urgent issues the city is facing currently and how would you like to see the council address?
I got a room just to roast that we have, not just the amount of the rate, um, and making sure that we don't get talent. And so addicted to, to revenue growth, making sure that we, um, the rate is new challenge, we have any sort of balance, not anti-her, but make sure that we stay with that asset. Make sure all the instructor is rolling the same rate to include business, we want to have reasonable revenues, we want a better company. Business, more, more of the loot system, like that. But at the same time, I'm looking at from a revenue perspective for the city, make sure we're about the people that city want, even though it could be a dating to us and staff or council or anything, we get all this money to the city, look what we can do with it. Uh, it's like, what do your people really want? Do they want to grow? Well, I see you're in five out of fifty, fifty, seventy-five, so hard to draw those. Um, so it's a balance that grows. And how do we, I hope people don't want it, I would make a list teams along. Do the interruption and the taxes, not obsessing with people don't want. I'm proud of them for that, whether it be social events or diversity, we've had recent diversity, that's all a lot of competition. Uh, which is, I'm sorry, bad. But, yeah, for those who don't want to grow, um, make sure they understand that we're being respectful of how people the city wants. The students want.
All right. How will you incorporate diverse viewpoints and perspectives into your decision and policy?
Well, I'm not gonna, you know, I know that I'm jaded or we're all biased, whatever the subject is, especially some of the subjects. And so what we need to do as a person in existence is try to take our own part of the set aside. Research is all people have to respect. What everyone here had, um, that especially do you know, in years. And listen, so then I'm necessarily armed in trying to protect them. When you say, well, this is not protected, um, and why? Not your strategy is wrong. And then once I've evaluated the other side, I try to take a step back. Now, in these, what do I think we enjoy? So how do they, our city wants that way, you know?
All right. And is there anything you'd like to say about yourself that you feel is important for us to consider before we conclude your interview?
Absolutely. I'll sit in the room. Right? Probably tell you, I think I'm telling you, I know it didn't involve me, you know. But what I want everyone here, I told a couple of you, please spread this word. The old rooms, am I gonna be here, right? So I, I wish I could see, I'll be here. I can't promise that. You know, my schedule was half a month gone, half a month here. Okay, this will be better than my normal college. And this last, I mean, for me was this online weird things where a little remote training to break. That's not what I have again. Um, but I can't honestly. But when I asked, I'll give a pass, I'll tell you where. There's a personal relationship I have with all of you, but I want y'all to vote on the city, for the works best for the city. I have no, absolutely zero party. I'll get this. I trust every monkey that you're formed to choose a person. Matter of the city, only that even most people will be here, we're using that, please vote for that.
Great. Thank you very much. You can grab a water and head downstairs if you want to see it. Thank you. You can sit there, watch everyone, and help yourself with that.
Oh, it's safe.
So I have four questions to ask you. So let's get started. When making decisions, how do you determine what is in the best interest of the community?
What I try to find is mainly common ground. What is the top most subtle thing that everyone wants? I don't know what's on what. Some people are gonna argue, we don't need it. The stripes on the road don't need to be blue and be red. Okay, this one over here says, strikes need to be purple, I think it shouldn't be red. What can we agree? We need to stress. That's the first time, working from there down, we try to figure out what we can compromise on, what we can decide to do, what we can make happen. We get a product that we can actually work on, how do we, how do we actually execute that? And then that's how I move down, trying to make decisions.
All right, thank you. What do you believe are the most urgent issues the city is facing currently and how would you like to see council address?
There, there's really, really two main issues that I'm seeing from my perspective. And one is big, one is not as big. And the biggest one for basically me and the community that I'm part of is seeing a rise in like hate speech, seeing a rise in, uh, documentate or not, it's that literature that is not very good for us, not very good for people of color, not very good for the L T community. I'm not sure what we can do about it, but that's what we can discuss about, how to find some way to counter that, if there's a way to counter that, find some way to mitigate it. The other one is evolve, has an issue where it's worrying about losing its character. And that's something that I'm very anxious to, as it erupts. I believe the city needs to keep growing to survive, but I also am afraid of losing its character. One of those ways we can do that is find ways to not control the growth, but to control the direction of growth. How do we make the city more accessible to people without losing the flair that it has? And that's one of the reasons that, uh, we're, one of the things we're doing with the cultural commission. Find out what the character of the town is, so that we can expand that out as the city expands and try to keep that flavor going. And I like to think that we're trying, we're doing a pretty decent job of that, at least on the cultural condition. One of the things that the city council can do is through zone. If we add an area, what can we do to make sure that we don't lose that character, that town character, more parks, more green areas, more green belts? Uh, sure, we're gonna have to have track thousands somewhere, but can we throw a park here? Can we throw a nature trail? Can we zone for, uh, for places to nature? That's what we can do here to make sure that this, that the vault making the staircase first.
How will you incorporate diverse viewpoints and perspectives into your decision and policy?
Well, I kind of did that. Um, one of the, I, I served basically three major, and I mentioned this before, three major uh, perspectives, the L G B T perspective, uh, BIPOC perspective, and the low income. The L G B T one, of course, the opportunity, I worked very hard with that with the recent, uh, the, the private installation, private art installations. Uh, helping where I can with the private festival, that was mostly previous work on that. And once we found out, I was like, I'm willing to help. Uh, the second one is BIPOC community. I've been coming here for about a year. And I've noticed that while the BIPOC community is for the most part protected, as is the L G B T community. That is not represented. Their voices aren't here, but they are protected. That's, there's two different breeds, that's two different things. It's one thing to make sure that no harm is to me, none of the other divisions was hurt. That's one thing that I can do as part of the BIPOC community. I'm Mexican myself and also, um, the low income. Uh, it is hard to live here. And I, I'm currently working a year and a half. And it is very, very hard to live here right now. I'm earning money, I have earth mining rights. But I like it here. And I would like to see if I can find a way to make sure that not only I sit here, but other people who are investors, are starting the first homes, are trying to make Duval their home. Allowed, make, make it their home. And that's something that I can give to this, to this.
Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to say about yourself that you feel is important for us to consider before we conclude your interview?
Well, I just appreciate the fact that you all are considering me. I appreciate the fact that I'm here. If you had told me a year ago that I would be doing this, I would have asked you how much are you someone to be broken first? Um, but through actually working with you all and through working with the process, through going through the cultural commission, going through those processes, and I've learned an incredible amount of stuff that I never thought I would. And I feel that this is an untapped well for me, and I would be happy to lend my services, lend my strength, lend my heart to this kind of, this council. As to what we can do for the communities. And I mentioned also that it's, I represent L G B T BIPOC low income. That is not all that I can give you. Um, there is no L G B T perspective on whether the water means. There is no BIPOC perspective on what, what color this truck should be in the middle of the road. I'm here to do the work as well. And I'd be happy to do the work and offer those voices. Even when those voices and the work don't mesh together, I'm willing to do that. I'm happy to be here right now, win, lose or draw. And I appreciate that your consideration.
All right, thank you very much. Um, so now. Wonder if you'll use that, bring Mel and we all back. There's.
Uh, so the council will, um, recuse ourselves to a session and reverse W four dot three zero, that's one one zero, sub one, sub H. Um, and then after executive session, we'll return and the council will, uh, vote for a finalist. There's one finalist, um, that person will, uh, be applied to the city council and sworn in after. Uh, there is no further business after that meeting, so if there's anyone online, um, that was expecting other businesses, this is all that we will be doing. Uh, and so with that, you'll have fifteen minutes. Start with fifteen. Yeah, we'll start with fifteen minutes and then next session and we'll look at clerk in, uh, a little longer.
Council will return from executive session at 20:00. So she, you know, call.
Council will return from executive session at 20:10.
Okay.
Right, the D. Ball City Council has first priority. Once again, I'll turn it over to Mayor Priscilla for the district voting for the city council. Okay, so I'll just read off the sheet from the Euroware. Each council member has three votes placed in X in the box next to the candidate's name you wish to vote for. You may elect to place all your three votes on a single candidate or disperse your three votes between multiple candidates. Council members will each vote individually on paper. Your name should be on the top corner there. So following each council member completing the scoring matrix, the city clerk will read each vote aloud and tabulate the results. The scoring matrix is our public reference and subject to public discretion. So go ahead and and we'll add the yeah. And in the other part, we'll go all the way. In that one, it's council. I don't know. We'll just write the people up, right?
Yeah. That was great. Please. Yeah. Although. Um. Yeah, yeah. It's it's amazing. But you're getting along like I would. Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
For Stephen Shore, two votes. For John Isaerson, nine votes. For Jennifer Hernandez, seven votes.
No, we are not.
Yes. There's a total of eighteen votes, because there are six council members with three votes each. And it would need to be a majority to uh to appoint at this point. And mine is not a majority, it's exactly half. And so there needs to be a amount. Um, we strive at the same and it's very difficult.
Okay, so I guess Oscar, or by doing roll out, he has another or.
I believe Mayor, um, let's see if I can correct me, we're wrong. We could amend the agenda, have a second vote to that be correct.
Either, yes, the rules already provide for um a runoff vote if necessary. And so I think that the runoff vote can happen under this particular item for both primary extended. It's part of the same process.
Sorry, one. Oh, yes. Wait a minute. Would you?
We need to vote.
Well. At this point, with 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 it being a runoff between two candidates, um, uh, I think it's up to the council to decide. I think it could be done through a um, through a voice vote. But if we want to stay true to the procedure, we can continue to use the ballot. Um, I would say that each council member should have one vote because it doesn't necessarily make sense for anyone to. At this point.
We will be placing one house candidate in your race between the two.
That's correct. Oh.
For anyone watching, I just have to, it's okay for me to say the size you hear, this is hard. They are all. So that's.
This is five.
And you can be voting. Well, it's been. There. Um, if there is some, so at this point, it's simple majority or there's still others.
At this point, each person is, yes, it would, uh, there's a total of six people voting. And so it would be, uh, we'd need to get more than we look for it to be a majority.
And if we were to tie, we could move to go to the executive session again. No. Sorry. Um, third for Harold.
Um, for John Isaerson, four votes. For Jennifer Hernandez, two votes.
Well, uh, John Isaerson, oh, first off, um, I'll say something I love about the story management. Thank you to all the candidates for applying, uh, except for the honors for the city and the overall more than we have. So thank you all for all the time for this process. And when we start in one month. Yeah, how much? So maybe you said it's it's always hard to have vacancy and to go through this process. Amazing candidates. Thank you all. And keep applying if another vacancy pops up or look at those other opportunities to serve. Uh, because we really want you involved with us. Um, put one of the offices.
I do. I just. More. Eric.
Yeah. This.
Did you? That hurt.
So if you raise your right hand and repeat off. From John Isaerson.
Senator Isaerson.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances from the city of Duval.
And all local ordinances from the city of Duval.
And then I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and.
Perform without discharge the duty of the office.
Performing the duty of the office.
A council member per position number one.
Council member per position number one.
According to the law, and that's.
According to the law of this.
And the.
Yeah. Well. I'm getting a very fair. No, as you.
Great, well, we may have a seat.
All right.
And with that, we do not have any further business proceeding, so welcome, Senator Isaerson. We are.